I don't know, it's uh, not necessarily something this serious, but I had similar reaction. I tried to remind everybody who was sitting there. Yeah. It's the worst thing in the world. But the good news is, um, Tom Trinkle, he's in the best place he can be.
Welcome everyone to this meeting. Order, please stand with us. We'll lend prayer first by Alderman Geller. Please remain standing after that with the pledge of allegiance and now we declare Alderman Lawrence George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we thank you, Lord, for being a Lord that loves us, Lord, even when we don't deserve it, who gives us grace, Lord, abundantly. Lord, we thank you for that grace that you've given us. We thank you for dying on the cross for us to save us from our sin, Lord. Lord, we ask you to be with us tonight as we have our meeting, Lord, that you, we pray that you give us knowledge and wisdom in all the decisions that are made in your name, in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Personally agenda this evening is the approval of amendments for previous meetings on August sixteen, August twenty-third, and August twenty-fourth.
Second.
We have motion Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Geller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the FY twenty-three budget resolution and tax levy for personal and real property. Mr. Nick Manley?
This resolution just adopts the budget, no increase in the military, no increase in sanitation rate, no increase in utility rates. So, uh, the, um, obviously we've had the hearing as well as this resolution just authorizes, uh, for the budget for FY twenty-three, publishing paper, and required all after approval. Uh, yeah, no, no, no increase in any taxes or utility rates or sanitation rates.
Mr. Mayor, we adopt the resolution fixing the F L R tax levy on real and personal property for taxes and establishing the budget appropriations and expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Geller. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda, our resolutions for fiscal year twenty-three donations.
This resolution is, uh, obviously, every has a donation for resolution. It's a resolution for donations as well. It's the same as last year, uh, no increases in the donations. Um, they're, uh, each, uh, each donation is identified out along with statutory authority for each one. And so tonight authorization for approving of that resolution as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to vote second.
We have a motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Geller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of amended employee handbook provisions.
Um, there's four of these tonight that are of consideration from the board of approval. And, uh, obviously Melman, Melman here as well, any questions, any deep questions. But, uh, we can do them one at a time and then, or we can go through them all, but, uh, once you want to, there's no objection to that. But, uh, the first one is just complaint, uh, the complaint resolution policy formerly was known as the re- 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 policy. And it just basically obviously changes the name complaint resolution. And it's a new beginning type arrest policy with all the requests, er, other types of valid claims, race, color, religion, sex, national origin, political relations, disability, uh, age, pregnancy, gender status, uh, and it, it directs the policy kind of out of plain or out of plain that vicinity. So that's the first one that's being changed tonight, uh, provides over the, of the four, trying to keep these current. Uh, the next one is conduct and disciplinary actions. Uh, these are, these, for previous agency policies were, these procedures scheduled, were scheduled or, um, printed out through the handbook. So this will just helpfully consolidate in one document, sort of one place to go where we know that they're all for the conduct and, uh, policies. And discipline policies, um, so that way it's consistent in one document. Uh, next is the anti-arrest policy. Uh, this one, uh, was, uh, also created, this is in several parts of the handbook, this is also consolidated. And it also, um, adds some language into it as well. And also notes that, um, uh, C A O has been changed as a charge director for complaints, uh, that links to, 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 uh, staffing structure, and then finally the vehicle policy. Uh, this just notes that if there's any unauthorized person or unauthorized occupant in the vehicle, uh, city vehicle, uh, the employee is assuming all risk, liability for that person, and it did not have city for that person. So, these are all four, uh, these are tonight for approval, um, Melman draft these, we review them. Um, as I think we noted about sixty-eight months ago, there'll be a continual process of reviewing and a employee handbook, this is just part of that process. So, tonight, if you have any questions, I obviously have to answer them, but also, uh, if we can afford approval, you can adopt them all at once. Or if you have any questions about EDL, you can adopt them as you see to that.
Nick, are there any changes or is it basically just consolidating?
Uh, the conduct and, um, the vehicle policy, so that's a change, that's new. The complaint resolution is also more detailed, um, that's definitely known as a re-read policy, so there's more detail to that. And then more, um, substance, so that's changed as well. Uh, the conduct and disciplinary actions has some change to it, but mostly that's solid to get in one document. And the anti-arrestment one is also solid along with adding more detail and for substance change for receipt of all, uh, got on the city.
Mr. Mayor, we adopt, uh, all four, uh, employee handbook, uh,
Amendments.
Amendments.
We have a motion Alderman Payne to adopt all four amendments to our employee handbook. And the second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Geller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is authorization for parks to seek bids. Uh, these are all related to our amphitheater enhancement project.
Yeah, this is authorization to seek bids and then in the event, I think, of our worst option we needed, in the event of worst option is the, um, authorized cars office use to complete any for that ever solution.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Geller, second Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Geller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution to amend our property maintenance code.
This, uh, resolution, uh, will authorize the amendment of the property maintenance code in the context of the penalties. It will increase the fine one thousand dollars per day, the penalty five hundred dollars per day for violation of the property maintenance code. Um, that's the maximum allowed for missing violations of Mississippi law. Uh, so tonight, this, um, resolution will amend that property code, or maintenance, property maintenance code to allow for that non-revision. And also, uh, as presented in time or in accordance with the Mississippi code for the maximum penalty for violation of the property maintenance code. And it's a permanent penalty as previously approved on the board.
So move. Second. We have a motion Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question, how does it proceed? Once they got to this point, we've gone through multiple steps to try to get, to try to help the order to fix whatever issue is on this house.
Yeah, I mean, all this-
Fix the issue on property maintenance.
Right, yeah, all this is changing, it's like, it's, it's the court, what happens in the court. Everything, nothing's changing about, you know, what our team does, uh, before they ever get to court. So, uh, again, just to recap, your question for everyone, you know, when there's, um, when there's, uh, an inspection done or someone sees that there's a violation of the property maintenance code, there's a warning that's given. Uh, there's a certain number of days that are given to give them time, uh, to correct that. And then obviously, uh, you know, when the violation is given and there is a court date set, then, uh, that's when the court system handles that. But it's, uh, it's my understanding that the court system is always gonna, their, their, the goal of this is not to find anyone. The goal of this is to improve the property conditions that are in our city. So our, I know in the past situations, our prosecutors and, and obviously our judge has done a really good job of working with people to find a solution to the issue. It's not, we're, you know, again, we're not there trying to, uh, you know, find someone. Our goal, uh, is to get the property improved and to, to get it into compliance where, you know, where it, um, you know, protects our neighborhoods, protects the curb appeal of the homes and, and, uh, property values in the city in prime terms. That, so nothing has changed with our goal of this maintenance code. And by the way, it's been extremely effective. I mean, it has been, uh, uh, y'all know, in two thousand and fifteen, there was a lot of discussion before, uh, we passed the property maintenance code. And, cause it was the first one the city's ever had, but it's been, uh, it's been very effective.
Second. And to your, to the mayor's point, I mean, there is a requirement that those must be given before anything else. Cause I think these are only coming to the effect after they're not working the report before to, so, once it knows it's getting the nine days passed, you then start sentencing companies in the event of the progress of the debate as, as a, as a, as a, so it's, to the mayor's point, this is the last resort. And then, so, but there is still nine days, that's a challenge, before anything can happen.
So Nick, when it says after judicial determination, then means they didn't convict it?
They didn't, they'd gone from the judge, the judge said you had nine days, you didn't respond, you didn't give any, anything, yeah. So it's, and after three months, nothing happened, but even checking the report, it's like your issue. And in the past, I know of a couple examples where it's come up and then there's been an issue and there's been a monetary issue. I know the service out there has been able to open that and that up as well. So, it's, it's basically those instances where they don't do anything and don't acknowledge it. Uh, it's only now these fines are coming into play, uh, or become the, the effective in the past. But there has to be, if you're going on a drone, has to be judicial termination yield when you think they have it and what's going on.
Any other discussion about the property maintenance code amendment? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
No.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Geller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a contract with Sosa County for EMS cooperative purchasing.
This, uh, contract is obviously with Sosa County in the recent, um, months, and probably been last, beginning, beginning of the year. Um, it's been difficult for certain medical supplies to be obtained by the county EMS, along with our EMS, other cities EMS within the county. Um, so this agreement, uh, will, uh, hopefully be able to solve that, allowing us to do all the cities and county board involve. And that will be, my understanding is based on what, uh, we've been told by Sosa County, that will then assist with, um, uh, prioritizing orders, allow for faster shipping and later there are certain medical supplies that we give our EMS departments. So this is not, this allows for all cities and counties work together. Um, when the county places an order, then you can then also, uh, for lack of a better word, you can pick it back off that order, um, to include some of the stuff at the beginning as well in our EMS system. And then it will then pay the county for our, our share. Uh, it doesn't require us to do that, which is in the event that we're needing supplies and then making price of placing a big order. Uh, that may help us with getting items quicker into the order we pull. And so it's just a purchase or interactive, basically a product of purchases between the entities so that we can add this, uh, to assist for those big orders and hopefully streamline the process and, you know, with the bottom line, perhaps, as far as us supply issues. So, the county places an order, we would then agree ours to the county within thirty-five days for the, uh, purchase of CDN, which you can do that. So it's the nomination of the mayor's office.
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Geller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller? Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for surplus property in South Lake Fire Department.
This, uh, obviously, this resolution, this surplus of vehicles or vehicle that are already needed, or vehicles that are already needed by South Lake Fire Department, and the words will be specific, seventeen between, uh,
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Geller? Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for surplus property utilities department.
This resolution also served as a property utility department, um, in accordance with seventeen twenty-five, twenty-five, two back codes. So all the utilities department.
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Geller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for EMS premium pay.
At the previous meeting, we, we, uh, approved premium pay, uh, for buyer lease in accordance with the Mississippi code. Uh, this is what I was trying to do, a lot of premium, uh, one thousand dollars for each of those, um, positions. Um, as part of that, EMS was also approved as well, uh, we paid for, uh, out of the city funds, which we discussed at the last meeting. Um, in looking at this more closely, I think it may be a, a, a resolution just to note enough facts, just like we did with the, uh, fire police. So, this, this, this resolution just basically affirms what we did at last meeting by proving EMS premium pay, amount of one thousand dollars, uh, which is also a hazard pay that we pay for by the city, which also be the amount of the existing fire police proceeding for the state, um, for the hazard pay, the federal department fund of the state, so tonight, this authorization, the mayor signed this resolution, um, so that EMS be paid consistently with our fire police.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Geller, second Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Geller?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution for unpaid sanitation fee.
This is, you know, this is unpaid sanitation fee, a set of resolutions that's needed for those who cannot pay fees, uh, as required under our ordinance and allow, uh, Mississippi code twenty-one nineteen-one, where we deploys lane or a hole on their, um, tag for unpaid fees.
I might just move. We have a motion Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Geller. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Geller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
That motion carries. So, next on the agenda is a rental variance for use of city facility.
Yeah, according to your facilities policy that was passed in two thousand and thirteen, anytime there is a, an event that I'll be at a city facility that's passed, Yeah, according to your facilities policy that was passed in two thousand thirteen, anytime, there is, uh, an event that I already get the city facility that has passed, um, the rare variance, and so this is just, uh, authorization for that variance for, uh, an event, uh, uh, a bank that a twenty seven thousand. Yes, it's been approved, regular, kind of, as well.
Do we need to do these as a daily, or?
This is, yes.
I'm looking motion, uh, first, on the rare variance, as far. Second.
We have a motion, Oliver McPain, second Oliver Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes, ayes, that motion carries. Is that for all? Is that for all?
That is just a real variance. Next one's a special permits, and we can do all those as one in a row.
Okay.
I go through all of those, we need to do it real quick.
Okay, let's go. Yeah, it's the approval of special permit.
The first one's just to have that advantage, that's the same one that's been, um, the eleven, this is eleven year issue, I think it's solid, so I think they're going to, I don't think they're, I have a patient request, um, either closed or held with assistance, um, across city level, maybe warrant, get the bridge, something, and then, and then, and then, five day. Um, that'll be, uh, cover sixteen, September, cover sixteen, that I have new. But the next one's with the round as charge ticketing, September seventeen, round as charge, including food trucks, tanks, rods, um, for that special permanent. And then, the next one's with the round as craft areas, September tenth, uh, craft and, uh, fair, interfare, uh, round as charge for that. Um, and that location, and the last one was on September ten, eleven, it's important to be rock and drive, as, uh, there'll be a bike, um, fundraiser that'll be coming through, or lighters coming through, a fundraiser, um, to the land center, um, on those days, finish that land, and then, so, I need to help track and control that, I think, as well. Uh, under ordinance, any special permits that we've devised require for approval, and so tonight, we need the board to present it, um, for your approval, and all in order for.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, Oliver Gallagher, second Oliver McPain. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Our four S. Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution to claim private property.
Mr. Mayor, would we approve a resolution, a doc, uh, doctor's resolution, grant authority to claim private property as presented on the state? Second.
We have a motion, Oliver McPain, second Oliver Kelly. Is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in any of the properties who would like to speak? Hearing perceiving none, roll call please.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our planning agenda. Ms. Whitney Cook.
I guess our, uh, first application is for a Hyatt House Hotel, which is going to be located on the northeast corner of Merrick Way and Hostetlalee. You'll see a design review package, uh, submitted here, this is HUD and RES, the location for the motel, uh, set to be, um, four stories, and, um, has more water appeal to it. There were some adjustments on the materials, specifically around the wall area. There were some adjustments to the landscaping, and adjustments to the lighting around it. Uh, the applicant did concede all of those, and, uh, with those comments, it was voted unanimously in favor.
Mr. Mayor, uh, move that we accept item number one on the, uh, plan, uh, planning agenda.
On item one, we have a motion by Oliver Jerome, we have a second Oliver Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Item number two of a minor subdivision application is going to be on the north side of State Line Road, um, between Getwell and Tulaoma, uh, basically just east of the Whitsong Lane, and, uh, those established homes you have on the north side. Uh, you'll see how it right there in red, it is a long narrow piece of property, it's six acres. Uh, the applicant has an existing home up against State Line Road, and they want to create, uh, a second lot, which would include the other four point four four acres, uh, for a family member to live on the backside of it. Uh, it does comply with the minor subdivision regulations set forth in the ordinance, it is add, it's less than three lots. Uh, what they submitted to us was totally compliant with that, it was voted unanimously in favor by the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, would we approve item number two of the planning agenda?
Second.
On item two, we have a motion, uh, for approval from Oliver Wheeler, second Oliver Gallagher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Item number three, we have two lots, uh, in the Silo Square commercial portion of the overall PUD. Right there is master plan associated with, um, all of the lots that are being addressed in Silo Square. This is specifically Lot twenty-five, which is going to be behind where the existing Tequila's is located. And then it's also Lot twenty-nine, which is, uh, on the backside up against the berm, on the south side of May Boulevard. Lot twenty-five, which has four point nine four acres, uh, Lot twenty-nine with one point seven eighty-six acres. Uh, the only comments that we had regarding it is to put placement of easements on the applicant's plaques that they provided to us, and they did identify a future road, um, to be dedicated to the city on the plaque that they submitted to us. Uh, so they did agree to submit in typical sections of that, to go into, uh, design and get that approved, and dedicate it to the city, the other plaque. Uh, with those comments, planning, planning commission, voting unanimously in favor, subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, would we approve item number three on the planning agenda? Second.
On item three, we have a motion, Oliver McPain, second Oliver Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries.
So the next application is a design review application for Lot twenty-five, which is the one I said is right in the Tequila. This lot was a period of the PUD as a mixed-use lot, so you will see four different structures on the lot, three are, uh, three, three-story loft buildings. Uh, anyhow, what you see right there, um, very similar to what you see down May Boulevard, the only difference you'll have is the bottom floor is not a store front, it is in fact, the bottom offs. Um, they have separated out the mixed-use portion of this into a single-story grocery store, uh, which is one of the other, um, right there you see. Um, that is the Silo Grocery, what you see jettied out to the side with the larger windows is a deli that has been placed in here as well. Um, there were many comments, uh, all positive, associated with all of these buildings, they're all the brick materials, all the design potential materials will match with the door out there. Uh, there were no comments regarding the buildings, uh, the lighting plans were already placed, everything you have at Silo. We did have some adjustments to the landscaping, but the applicant did agree to all of those, so once the comments were made, planning commission voted unanimously in favor.
Mr. Mayor, would we approve item number four on the planning agenda? Second.
On item four, we have a motion, Oliver McPain, second Oliver Kelly. Um, a little bit of discussion here, I will point out the fact that, uh, having the grocery store piece has officially made Silo Square a completely walkable community. Uh, obviously, the grocery store component was necessary for that, uh, with the, all the other things there. This is the vision that, that we talked about years before, uh, this is the vis, the vision that Brian Hill, you know, um, had as well. And so now, you're seeing all this come to fruition, uh, it's, it's the first truly walkable community in the city of Silo in history. And we'll continue, not just to Silo, that's the reason that we continue with, you know, the multi-use trails and the, you know, sidewalk additions and things like that, you know, to bring that quality of life throughout our city, you know, obviously, there's a lot of economic energy in Silo Square, uh, but we hope to, you know, continue that plan throughout the city with our trails, uh, and it just, it makes, uh, makes us a healthier community, it makes us a more appealing community, you know, not just for our residents, but for our businesses, uh, they're looking to bring their families here as well. But anyway, kudos to, um, you know, to Brian Hill and Silo Square, uh, with the grocery store component, it is now a truly walkable, uh, walkable community.
Question, is, this, these the owners, the same people that have these sound name grocery and deli?
Possibly. I have, I've not been told I can release any further information regarding that stuff. But that is, that is.
If it's anything like that, it's amazing.
I think, uh, Brian is prepared to announce that very soon, but as a planning commission, uh, it was still being asked to, you know, just call it.
You can tell by the other things that are there, the standard there is high, so you can ev, you can bet that it's going to be a high quality. Okay, any other discussion on four? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
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 That motion carries.
And there, we go, I'm having trouble with our, uh, here. We don't have a second one to leave.
You got it.
You got it?
How many twenty minutes?
Michael, could you help us make sure that they're having trouble seeing the second page of the agenda?
Look at this, this is a high school.
George, yeah. Can you say, can you say?
Yep.
George is a hard expert.
Yeah, he looks like.
What's that expert? Weird.
Weird. So odd.
You got it?
You do, okay.
Moving forward, item five.
Okay, uh, and just to kind of play off of what the mayor was saying about all-inclusive subdivision and, uh, development, the next application we have as well, uh, is on Lot twenty-nine, the one that backs up the residential portion of it. This is a childcare facility, kind of designed to be a monastery school, uh, which you'll see right there, it has the old, um, school staple on it, uh, it's very ornate, matches right in with, uh, what you'd think of as an old schoolhouse, uh, it again is using all materials. Uh, if you scroll up into the architectural design of it, so you better clearly see what it's, uh, what it looks like. Um, anyhow, it's using all materials that are already in play there, it transitions well out of the main street design over into the residential side, since it backs up to both, it utilizes materials from both, uh, aspects, it had a great landscape plan, it had proper access, uh, the lighting plan was great, we had no comments on this one, and recommend it for the last minute.
Mr. Mayor, would we approve item number five on the planning agenda?
Second. We have a motion on item five, Oliver McPain, second Oliver Gallagher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 Our four S. Yes.
That motion carries.
Item number six, this is the inside of, uh, this is going to be on the north corner of Getwell and Wildflower Lane. Uh, so it'll be that corner lot, and it is going to be a sports restaurant slash, uh, golf simulation, uh, recreational building called Let It Blah. Um, I think most people here know that it's Obama Miller, um, who's one of the first basketball players to ask, he was coming up with planning, which he could not make it, I was hoping he knew it or not, but he's not.
He was a agent before.
He was not here tonight, so, but this is his, um, this is his venture. Uh, you'll see up there, it's a two-story building, uh, there's a second story medicine that overlooks the interior space on the bottom floor, has two outdoor patios to it. Uh, again, it's using a lot of the materials that you already have in play with Silo Square, um, they're going to actually use murals on the backside of it. Uh, landscape plan is great, lighting plan matched up with everything along Silo Square, uh, was voted unanimously, um, with the exception of just rearranging some lighting, but it was voted unanimously with that comment by the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, would we provide item number six on the planning agenda? Second.
On item six, we have a motion by Oliver McPain, second Oliver Gallagher. Again, I know that's a, that's a home run, uh, right there, I mean, for, uh, for the recreational area, you know, tying in the sport aspect, having a golf simulation. Um, I've heard the food is incredible as well, so a great addition to our city. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
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 That motion carries.
Our final application is also in Silo Square, but this is in the residential portion, um, so the master plan you see right there, uh, there is a piece just north of where you see all the commercial district, that's an orange and kind of off yellow, that is the portion of, is being requested for approval tonight. These are very similar to the cottage homes that you already have, uh, once you get past the commercial area on May Boulevard and turn left, um, these houses have rear alleyway access in portions of it, uh, that follow the main thoroughfare, so you don't see backyards. Uh, once you get onto the interior space, uh, they go front loaded garages, but if you've been through the cottage homes, those same architectural plans are being used to your same minimums, are being used to your same lot sizes. Uh, it was approved with the original PUD, and it does comply with that design, so it was voted unanimously in favor of the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, would we provide item number seven on the planning agenda? Second.
On item seven, we have a motion, Oliver McPain, and a second Oliver Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is our mayor's report, uh, we'll talk to you tonight about health insurance. Uh, we've been in the process of, uh, discussing our, our city's health insurance policy with our insurance broker. Uh, we've gotten good news, uh, y'all know the history we've had, and we've had some challenges, uh, with our healthcare program in the past. You know, with, uh, with, we've had some trouble with loss ratio, so just to give you a report on where we've been, in two thousand seventeen, the city had a ninety-nine point ninety-three percent loss ratio. Uh, keep in mind that the break-even point for, for our health insurance companies is approximately eighty, somewhere in the eighty to eighty-five percent range. So when you're above that, that means, it means they're losing money on your account, uh, which means that you're not in a position to have as much, uh, you know, demand in the marketplace, that to change companies' benefits and to change the price. So, uh, in two thousand eighteen, it went from ninety-nine ninety-three to one hundred and thirty-four point seventy-five. Uh, then it went, uh, when we thought it couldn't be any worse, the next year it went to one seventy-seven oh eight. So we've had some serious, serious challenges over the years, we've made some changes along the way to the, um, you know, to what's customary in the marketplace, you know, requirements, spouses, uh, that had access to other, uh, coverage, uh, would be excluded from the policy. That was one of the big changes that we made that, that helped our loss ratio, but it's been a big struggle for us, it's something that's been tough for us. You know, we know that our compensation package is not just salaries, benefits as well, uh, so we've been working hard to try to, you know, keep that price down, and make sure we get the best coverage at the best price. We started having good results, two thousand twenty, uh, we went from one seventy-seven down to fifty-six percent, so we, we started, uh, becoming a, a profitable account, uh, in the marketplace again. Uh, two thousand twenty-one, the trend continued, we went down even further to fifty-three point seventy-four. And so we're, we're hanging tight, we had some issues this year, but we still came in at seventy-four ninety-one in this last year, so that's good for us. Uh, that, that keeps our rates, uh, competitive, and again, it keeps us attractive in the marketplace. So, uh, with all the, each year, as y'all know, uh, we send our broker out to the marketplace, uh, to check the, uh, the major players in the group health insurance market. They did that again this year, uh, y'all know that we're with United Healthcare now, uh, they went and checked with Cigna, Humana, Aetna, and Blue Cross, uh, which are the, the, the big players in the southeastern part of the United States, and the best option is still United Healthcare. So it's going to be my recommendation, uh, to the board tonight, that you allow me, uh, the authority to renew the policy of United Healthcare. Premium is staying exactly flat, it's exactly the same, uh, as it was last year, so no increases. Um, we are able to, uh, we were able to get a negotiation to drop the copay for primary care physicians from forty dollars a visit down to twenty-five, so that's going to help our people, and so same price and a little bit added benefit. So it's, it's my ask tonight, that you give me the authorization to renew the policy of United Healthcare. So move.
Second.
We have a motion, Oliver Gallagher, second Oliver Wheeler. Any, any questions, any discussion?
Did we, did any kind of, we, we have a few things that we were talking about earlier, about like, uh, may I have a chance to do this, do they, do they approve any of that stuff this year, or?
Everything's, with the exception of the, the copayment for the primary care physicians, everything else, um, the only other thing that's different is the dental. We're going to have a little bit better option on the dental coverage, but as far as, uh, everything else on the major policy of United Healthcare, it's, uh, it's the same. You know, you may remember that last year, uh, we came in and lowered our deductible, and what the city pays for the employees, we pay a hundred percent of the cost for our employees, and we changed that deductible from two thousand down to fifteen hundred, so we, we reduced that to help our employees, uh, but everything else has stayed the same since last year. Any other discussion? And United Healthcare is, again, it goes without saying, they're one of the major players in the market, so, and it's, it's good, there is a benefit, as y'all know, to, uh, I mean, obviously, we're going to go, we're going to go with what the best option is for our people, but, uh, but from a convenience standpoint, it's nice for our employees not to have to switch, you know, companies to. Okay, if there's no other discussion, roll call please.
Yes.
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 And that motion carries. Next on our agenda, uh, is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, would we approve the personnel docket as presented on the state? Second.
We have a motion, Oliver McPain, second Oliver Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update. Nothing this evening, and next on our agenda is our utility bill adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, would we approve the utility bill adjustment docket as presented? Second.
We have a motion, Oliver McPain, second Oliver Hoots. Is there any discussion? Christie, I, I, I meant for weeks and weeks to ask, but on our next agenda, add the word leak, please, for us. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda are two claims documents.
Mr. Mayor, would we approve docket number one in the amount of two million twenty-nine thousand sixty-five dollars and ninety-two cents, including damage.
On docket one, we have a motion, Oliver McPain, a second Oliver Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
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 That motion carries on docket one. Is there a motion to approve docket two?
Mr. Mayor, would we approve docket number two in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents.
On docket two, we have a motion, Oliver McPain, second Oliver Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
Second.
We have a motion, Oliver Gallagher, second Oliver Wheeler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any opposed, say no. Ayes have, motion carries, the need, uh, this evening is potential ongoing litigation involving the city, economic development within the city. Uh, South Haven Fire Department employee discipline, and interdisciplinary personnel with no board action. Is there a motion to declare executive session?
So move. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Wheeler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have, motion carries, the mayor and board will nominate an executive session.